We have your written testimony, if whatever you'd like to say, and then we'll get to questions. Please.
We're going to open up with Chairman White.
Pardon me?
We're going to open up with Chairman White, and then I have a few opening comments.
Okay, please speak right into the microphone, please. Identify yourself and proceed.
Jeremiah White, Chairman of Community College of Philadelphia. Good morning.
Hold, 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 one second. One second. Please, if I could ask everybody to be quiet, please. Thank you. Please.
Okay. Good morning. Council President Clark and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you regarding the future of Community College of Philadelphia. My name is Jeremiah White, and I'm Chairman of the Board of Trustees and Chief Executive Officer of White and Associates. Joining me as trustees is Michael Swallow. Community College of Philadelphia is answering the call of the city designing initiatives to combat its chronic stubborn poverty. The members of the Board of Trustees are not simply guiding and supporting this college's, city's college, rather we are working to make higher education a vital resource that meets the urgent needs of individuals, neighborhoods, and businesses. The members of the Board of Trustees are government, civic, and business leaders who represent a cross-section of Philadelphia. While Greater Philadelphia is home to more than 100 colleges and universities, our college is unique. First, because it's the only public institution in the city, and second, because it offers career credentials as well as stackable credentials that can turn the unemployed into sought-after job prospects. During the last few academic years, the policies, initiatives, and initiatives that we have implemented are having a real-time effect. With Power Up: Your Boldness, a bold new initiative, we are strengthening neighborhood businesses. We are sparking deep conversations about inclusion and learning with the Center for Male Engagement, which has partnered with the city to host dialogues on challenging, challenges facing African-American boys and youth. We are contributing to the workforce by sending forth many diverse workers with a new perspective and ideas. Research shows diverse workplaces spark creativity and innovation. Since his arrival almost three years ago, Dr. Generals has emphasized values of shared learning among faculty, staff, and students, his work to increase student persistence and credential completion rates. Programs such as these are smart investments even in these lean financial times. With additional funds from the city and more support, the college can do much more to create accelerated learning and career paths and to reduce achievement gaps. On behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, I'd like to thank Council President Clark, Mayor Kenny, and all of City Council for their continued support for the college. With additional investment and support for Community College, we can continue to provide opportunities that change lives and make our local workforce stronger and more competitive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Don Generals. We're here on behalf of Community College of Philadelphia. Our request from the city is for 30, my apologies, is for $33.5 million, which is $3.6 million above last year's budget. We have listened to the requests from the business community and many public officials to design strategies to deal with the city's intractable poverty rate. Among those which we think this $3.6 will go a long ways towards helping is to increase our programming in CTE, or Career Technical Education programs, to increase our graduation rates, which is about 12 percent. We hope to be able to increase that, double that, within a matter of years, and also to deal with reach, our reach into parts of the city that continue to not be able to benefit from the advantages that the Community College has to offer. In a very specific way, we've increased our career technical education by partnering with the school district. We've just submitted 15 new proposals to the Philadelphia Works for career and technical training. We have doubled our efforts in working with the school district for dual enrollment programs. We have about 1,000 students who are working with us, working through our dual enrollment program. Dual enrollment programs enable students to accelerate towards graduation, it reduces their cost for education, and it enables them to be successful because of the added advantage of starting college early. This fall, we will open up an early college program in Central Park West, Central Park Parkway Central, excuse me, where students will begin to take college-level courses in their freshman year. And in theory, if they complete the pathway that we lay out for them, by the time they graduate high school, they will have completed an associate's degree. This is a model that's being implemented across the nation, and it will be one of the first in the state of Pennsylvania. In addition to that, we've met the call for dealing with the city's poverty rate, in part through our KEES program, Keystone Education Yields Success. It's the acronym for, KEES is the acronym for that. This year's graduation, we had 19 KEES participants in our graduating class, nine of whom received nursing degrees. These are students who started with us. They were on, KEES is a welfare-to-work program, so they started with us when they were on government assistance, and now they will be moving into jobs which are average of about $50,000 a year. This past Saturday, we graduated over 2,000 students. Since in the last 10 years, we've graduated 20,000 students. We have an economic impact on the city of about a $340 million a year impact, which includes the, which includes the impact that our graduates have because of increased wages and salaries that they gain as a result of their degrees. Chairman White mentioned Power Up. We had 125, this program just started in the fall. We had 125 members from the business community take part in this program. This past week, we have 14 of those individuals, 14 business owners, this past week graduated from the inaugural program. They represent 13 companies, including a range, ranging from childcare service to services to fabric, boutique, saloons, and vintage furniture sales. Participants represent 63 businesses from 28 different zip codes. Over the last two and a half years, we have offered what we refer to as the city's College Promise, or the 50th Scholarship Program. 527 students took advantage of that program. These are students that went to college full-time. They had to provide community service. This past weekend, we had seven of those students graduate of that, from that initial cohort of students. We partnered with the school district to begin offering advanced manufacturing in the Ben Franklin High School, which is across the street from the college, the main campus of the college, as you know. We had about 120 students that enrolled in that program. And finally, I want to, again, excuse me, finally, I want to point out the fact that, as you may know, the college did purchase property at our west campus with the intention of expanding our automotive tech program. This will allow us to double the number of enrolled students. It will also allow us to double the number of programs that we have that will include diesel instruction and diesel automotive technology, as well as alternative energies. And we believe that this is in a part of the city that's part of a growth zone, is part of the economic promise zone, and we think that this will be a wonderful opportunity for our students. So, we continue to expand our program offerings, especially in the areas of career and technical education. We think that that's extremely important to the city. We continue to expand our support services for students to enable and to facilitate their graduation and their retention. We view that as a critically important aspect of what we try to do, and I'm willing to take any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you both. Just let me start out with just a couple. Under your current funding level, what percentage of your funding comes from student tuition payments as opposed to governmental, you know, local, state, federal sources?
Around 58 percent of our operating budget comes from student tuition.
Fifteen?
Fifty-eight, five-eight, comes from operating.
Four-fifteen is out of law. Okay.
Right, 58 percent.
Okay. Now, you said you grad, with the students you graduate, do you know how many, percentage-wise, go on to a four-year program and complete?
Yes. Out of the graduating class, 2,000, about 60 percent of those students will transfer to four-year institutions. Most of them will go to Temple, a lot go to Westchester, and many of them take online courses, and it runs the gamut. Some of them go to Cheney as well.
As a Temple graduate, I advocate going to Temple, so.
They're very, they're very important partners of ours.
Right, I know. You talk in your written testimony about the job training, and you talked about it in your verbal, too. Are there some additional programs that you're looking to expand to, particularly if you have some more resources to do that?
Absolutely. Again, we, through our partnership at this point with the school district at the Ben Franklin Advanced Manufacturing Institute, we are currently offering welding, CNC, PLC, programmable logical controls, electrical, mechanical, Megatronics. We hope to be able to introduce robotics. Right now, we're offering certificate programs. We expect to expand that to degree programs and pre-engineering programs. We've partnered with businesses to begin to offer what they refer to as blended programs, whereby students increase their language skills, especially students that are non-English-speaking students, while at the same time receiving the training in whatever the career technical training program might be. We've received support for that from the state of Pennsylvania, and we're very excited about that in terms of how it can expand the scope of opportunities for students who at this point are blocked because their language skills are not up to par. So, we continue, we will continue to expand in those areas, and these are just the mechanical, advanced manufacturing areas. We also offer programs in healthcare. We've expanded our programs in our CNA. We are continuing to develop the ladder from CNA to home healthcare helpers, to LPN, into the RN program. The nursing program continues to be a flagship program of the college.
You mentioned English-language speakers. About how many, again, percentage-wise, would you say are not English-as-a-first-language students, do you know?
At the college?
Yes.
Anyone know that number? Maybe about 12 or 15 percent.
About 15 percent, okay.
We can get, we can get that number for you.
Okay, if you could. I think that'd be interesting.
Our number of Hispanic students is about 12 percent. So, but of course, it's not just Hispanic students.
Sure.
We have, you know, Asian, Vietnamese. It's a large population that we serve.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to each of you. Thank you so very much for being here. Let me start first, Dr. Generals, and I want to, I always start this way with departments when it's definitely been good, because it's worthy to note, because if it was ugly, I would start this way, too. I need to say a special thank you to you and your team, your executive team, for being so responsive when we call your office for assistance with our constituency. You know, the ninth councilmatic district boasts the largest number of students who attend Community College of Philadelphia, who live in the city, the northwest campus. You know, I have a lot of community-based meetings there, so aside from educating people, community is a part of the civic action, and particularly in the region where the, where the campus is held, and so I needed to say thank you to that for the record, because I bug Lynette Brown so more than I probably should. So, you know, thank you and your team for that. With that being said, I'm biased. Talk a little bit more, you went to Temple, Councilman Greenlee, but I went to Parkway Center City.
Okay.
And that is where the dual enrollment program will be. Tell me, do we know approximately how many ninth graders will be starting the program when you get started? How do you, how many do you expect to kickoff?
I believe it's about 125, you say? Do you remember? Yes. We'll start with 125. We hope to be able to run that number up to 500 as quickly as possible. There are multiple programs, including GIS, computer information technology, and I believe coding might be one of them, but there's three different academic programs that they'll have an opportunity to be in.
Well, now I'm skipping, because you mentioned something that was going to be in a later question, and that was coding. Councilman Allen Dom and several technical firms have talked about the power of coding and ensuring that our young people, you know, are learning the craft and the skill. So, you think coding will even be a part of this program?
Coding will be a part of this program. We are building out our coding platform, if you will. As you know, it's, could include certificates, short-term certificates, as well as degree programs. So, we are working with our faculty to develop programs in coding for, for this particular effort, as well as continuing at, at the college, and as well as ultimately towards the degree program.
Now, when you enact this program, I just want to make sure that I heard your testimony correctly. Did you say that CCP will be the first or one of the first?
It's my, it is my understanding that we are the first in Pennsylvania.
So, it is my hope, I know you went through the approach process already in Harrisburg, and having had the great fortune of spending 10 years there, I am hoping that that sort of innovative thinking and trying to make sure that we decrease the cost of higher education and practically train our young people for employment in areas that we know is actually bustling will bode well with the Pennsylvania General Assembly. So, I know you have advocates across the board who are probably reaching out to their state legislators, saying, "Support CCP." They should make sure that this program in particular, because Philadelphia's not usually on the cutting edge of most in the minds in Harrisburg. So, when we do something and we get it right, and we're ahead of the curve, we need to really boast about it, because folks need to know when we get it right. My next question is about something you mentioned in your testimony, and that was Power Up. And I just needed you for the record, because you talked about this a bit in your written testimony, where you mentioned jobs in Philadelphia. I want you to talk about where those participants came from. I just want you to give those stats again, from throughout Philadelphia.
While I read this again, I'll ask Carol to prepare for that. But it was 125, the number of businesses participating in the Power Up, business neighborhood-based workshops for small businesses. I know that many of them came from your councilmatic district. Do you know where? There were 28 different zip codes.
Yeah.
28 different zip codes.
So, I want to-
And we just had the graduation last week, literally. There were 14 individuals who, you know, it's a bit of a challenge, because they're running businesses. So, to be able to attend a 10-week, 30-hour course at the Northwest Regional Center, which is where most of the activities were, was somewhat of a challenge, but we were able to get 14 of them through, who will now be able to expand their businesses and have the technical know-how to grow their businesses and grow their revenue and to grow the employees. But we can get the specifics relative to where each one came from, who they were. We actually, one of my documents, I believe we had information, but we can actually get to information relative to who those businesses were.
Okay, I think I may have failed. So, you said 28 different zip codes.
28 different zip codes, yes. 63 businesses, 28 different zip codes.
And I wanted you, Doctor, to just note that for the record, 63 businesses, 28 zip codes, to demonstrate that this program is benefiting the city of Philadelphia.
Absolutely.
And I think it's appropriate that you were testifying right before our Commerce Department, because one of the things that we've been constantly hammering home is the importance of attempting to strengthen not only the center-city growth of business and development, but we have to focus on our neighborhood commercial corridors. So, it is highly likely that those who are participating, those 63 businesses participating in Power Up, the hope is that they come back, and if they're operating out of their houses, just maybe they may get a business along our commercial corridor. So, I just wanted to note that for the record and say thank you, and that is it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Dr. Generals, and Mr. White, and members of the Community College Philadelphia Board and staff. I have a question in reference to some of your CTE programs. You gave a little bit in your testimony, but I want to get some more, more specific in reference to, you talked about your diesel training program for CTE, and I want to get-
That's what we will build out at the Autotech Center in, in West Philadelphia. We just purchased the land, which enables to us to pretty much double the footprint. I don't know if you're familiar with the, with the garage, basically, that we have there now, but we're very limited in our capacity to grow that program in terms of enrollment, as well as programs. So, our, our growth plan will allow us to offer diesel, diesel training, automotive technologies, and all the sort of ancillary aspects of auto and transportation technology.
In addition, I know you had, there was a pilot program headed at Ben Franklin, I think about maybe a year, maybe two years ago.
We just started that in the fall.
Oh, you just started the fall, okay.
Well, it took that long to get, to get an agreement with the school district, but we just-
And how many students do you anticipate going through that CTE program, and what are the dynamics of the program?
Well, we're relying on individual training accounts from Philadelphia Works at this point. We are trying to build out, in order for students to qualify for financial aid, they have to, the programs have to offer a certain amount of hours. We're not there yet. So, right now, we're relying upon either third-party pay or ITA accounts from Philadelphia Works. We very lately had those programs approved by the state of Pennsylvania, so the pipeline has expanded, and we're getting more and more. I believe we'll start our second cohort soon?
We started the second.
In the fall? We started the second. We'll be starting the third in the fall. So, the, the numbers are, are small, but they are growing at this point. And the program areas, again, is welding, CNN precision, electromechanical, Megatronics. And I should also mention that we just completed a gas distribution pipeline training program in conjunction with PICO, and we received a $200,000 grant to buy our own equipment so that we can continue that on our own. We were doing it in partnership with the consortium, with the Community College Consortium, but our end of that produced 15, 15 workers who will, will be able to get livable wages, and they will be graduating within the next week.
And you may have said this earlier in your testimony, what opportunities will graduates of those programs be able to go into building trades?
So, we are in conversations. We have partnerships with Steamfitters and I believe 1199, whereby the training that occurs there, we parlay into college, a college transcript, but they provide the training. As you know, the idea of pre-apprenticeship programs is something that we're talking about, but we, we don't have any clear pathway from our training into these, into the unions, quite frankly. But we are having multiple conversations, and there is a commitment and a willingness to do that. I think some of the new approaches, some of the new curricular approaches, that blended approach I was telling you about, is something that they're very open to, the idea that the training can occur while they're learning, you know, basics of language and mathematics and some of the more academic programs. But we don't, we do not have a direct pipeline at this point.
Okay. In reference to the Power Up program, have you had any conversations with the Rebuild Initiative at all regarding, or?
Just very, very tangential. I'm on the mayor's advanced manufacturing with Mr. DeBurdanis. Harold Epps is here somewhere, so we've, we've had some partial conversations about-
The reason I raise that, because I know Mr. Epps is here, and we'll probably talk about the Capitol Consortium a little bit later, but the Capitol Consortium is an initiative to bring our community development and financial institutions together, and small businesses and lending entities, to help small businesses get access to credit. And the fact that Power Up provides technical assistance to businesses, I think will be a good opportunity to connect some of the people who are running the Power Up program with Rebuild. I've been working with Rebuild and the Capitol Consortium for those businesses that are interested in going into the Rebuild Initiative to receive contracts from the program managers to get access to credit. I mean, there'll be a time period before that gets up and running, because we have to do our work here in council regarding the bond legislation. But for businesses, especially small businesses, that could possibly look at some of those contracts, if they're going through the Power Up program and getting technical assistance, connecting them with Rebuild to let them know about some of the outreach opportunities that they're working on for small businesses, so they can prepare for the Rebuild Initiative, as well as partnering with the Capitol Consortium can provide some opportunities to get access to credit. Because now is the time that they need to be preparing, if they're even interested in looking at initiatives, so they can be prepared when those RFPs and other opportunities come on board.
You know, Power Up is very new, literally, months, within months, and I think we've had great success. I think, you know, when we looked, when we started Power Up, in part, we modeled it at least a little bit along the 10 KSB program that we also have, and I can report that, you know, one of the, one of the business scholars, Claire Razak Hines, which was a company, has a company referred to as Net America, received a 10-year, $25 billion contract from the Centers for, that's billion with a B, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid. Another graduate, Ken Carter, the African-American president and chief operating officer at Supra Office Solutions, had one of the fastest-growing small businesses in the city. So, we have a model there that works, and, you know, part, at least in part of the Power Up was, was designed to emulate some of those structures, which include, you know, the credit, PIDC relationships, and so forth. So, I think the next phase of that will certainly have to include, you know, these aspects of finances and credit and opportunity to get capital in order to grow their businesses. But I'm hopeful and optimistic by virtue of the fact that we didn't have that at this point, and as we grow, you know, I think we've demonstrated the success, and more importantly, the need. It started out with 125 businesses came forward to take advantage of this. So, I'm optimistic with what has been shown so far, so far, and I know there's a lot of community support, and as Councilwoman mentioned, these are businesses that are in our communities. They're in, you know, the business corridors of this, of this city. So, I think that would be the next logical component that we would build into this.
Well, I think that would be an excellent opportunity, because I think the Power Up Initiative provides an opportunity for small businesses, especially in our commerce corridors, to get access to training, where that next level up is the Goldman Sachs 10,000 Small Business Initiative, and then the level up above that is the ICIC Initiative that Commerce Director Epps and I have been working with as well. So, I think those three kind of tiers provide the access to that technical assistance to help businesses grow from one level to the next, to the next. But on the other side of the equation is the access to credit, where I think the Capitol Consortium can play a role, as well as ICIC. And so hopefully, you could bring Jonathan Snyder in from the Commerce Department, as well as others that can provide that information, as well as Nicole Western from Rebuild, to get that information out to the businesses that are going through Power Up, as well as the Goldman Sachs 10,000 Small Business Initiative.
Absolutely.
Another question I want to bring up, so we talked about, and I think we've had this conversation as well regarding the significant amount of training opportunities in the gas industry. I know you have a training program that you recently started, I think funded by Exelon, and I'm looking to how we can expand that. From my understanding is that currently the cost of the program is about $5,000 per person, and how many people have you had go through that program as of?
Well, we've, the gas distribution pipeline, you said, right? Yes, we, we just graduated 15. So, we've had one program. We graduated 15. We, you know, we're, we're providing facilities and spaces that probably, you know, need to be modified in order to provide this, but we did receive $200,000 from the state to, to augment and to expand that program. So, we will be graduating 15, I believe, is it next week sometime, Carol? The 15th, May 15th, the first cohort, and we'll, we'll start our subsequent cohorts after that.
And is that a program you anticipate having? How long is the program? Is it eight weeks, not 10 weeks, 12 weeks?
I believe it's eight weeks. Eight weeks? Two months, eight weeks, yeah.
And so, once people finish that, that cohort, the graduates then go to, go where? What's the next step for them?
Well, we have partnerships with PICO, PGW, and we're trying to place them.
Okay. And you said that the Commonwealth is going to provide some additional dollars of how much?
The Commonwealth gave us $200,000. We, we received the highest, they, they have an appropriation for career technical job training programs, and we, there may have been one under the college that received $200,000, but we received among the highest appropriation from that fund.
So, in that, that first cohort of about 15, how many initially started the program?
How many what?
How many initially started the program? Did the entire 15?
I think it was 15. Did we lose anybody?
It's 100 percent.
Okay. And if you, if there were additional dollars available, would you have the ability to grow and expand that program?
Yes. It's, it's a pretty specialized area, but we've, what we're being told by the industry is that there's a need for these, these trained individuals, and with the expectation of southeast region becoming a hub for the distribution of various energy sources, we think the future bodes well for that kind of training.
Well, you know, beyond the speculation of, you know, southeast PA becoming an energy hub, I know just from my work as Chair of the Gas Commission and talking with people at Exelon, as well as, you know, UGI, I'm just in the Pennsylvania side, but when you also look at PSENG, and just this region, there's a significant need for gas main replacement. Every one of the utilities in our region are all trying to fight the clock to get more main completed, to prevent any type of leak which could possibly unfortunately lead to an explosion. So, that's not just, and then when you think about the age of the northeast and mid-Atlantic corridor, from a utility perspective, all these utilities have aging mains or very old mains, and so there's a significant demand for people with a skill set that can do main replacement, and you can probably go as far north as Boston, as far south as Richmond. So, there's a significant pull on the east coast for that type of skilled workforce, and considering this is an opportunity to train people, I think provides a great opportunity to try to get more people, especially from our local schools, who have that interest in that type of work, to get a family-standing job and career.
Absolutely. I think welding falls into that category as well. You know, when you're talking about pipes and infrastructure for transport of, of any type of energy, all of the areas that we're now working with in the advanced manufacturing area bode well for, you know, the particulars of, of energy and/or gas distribution. Part of what we're doing and working with the school district is to try to encourage students earlier about the potential for some of these opportunities. We're leasing the property now for our training, our program- We're leasing the property now for our training, our program. The next leg of that will be to articulate program to program with the Volk Tech and the Career CTE programs in the district to try to bolster the pool of potential students that would want to go into these programs. But everything that I have heard is that there is a demand, there's a growing demand, there are, you know, livable, family-sustaining wages that are behind that. And I think the fact that, right out of the box, we were able to recruit and retain and graduate 15 individuals who presumably will get jobs, I think that bodes well for the potential of this particular field.
And just to close on this line of questioning, for the 15 graduates, were you also working with any labor unions as part of this program?
Working with who?
Were you working with any labor unions as part of this program, as a gas training program?
As part of the academic program, I don't know that we are.
I see a head shaking back there, so I think the answer is no.
Saying yes? No. But I'm assuming PICO and PGW have labor unions.
Right, exactly.
So, you know, they're the ones who are advocating, advancing this project. So, I don't know particularly, but I would guess that that would be the case, because they're labor-oriented companies.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
And I want to second that comment about Ms. Brown, so who's always very responsive whenever my office calls to. So, thank you all very much. Thank you for all the work you're doing.